Okay, I think we'll get started. It's 7:00 PM, so I will call the meeting to order for the regular council meeting for Monday, June 24th. And we will begin by asking everyone to stand if you're able for the singing of O Canada.
(Music) 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 (Music)
Okay, thanks, folks. All right, so we will jump over to the roll call of councillors. So over to you, Troy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. District One, Deputy Warden Sean Sampson.
(Mumbling)
District Two, Councillor Michael Digdon.
Present.
Thank you. District Three, Councillor Melanie Sampson.
Present.
Thank you. And District Four, Warden Amanda Mumberkett.
Present.
Thank you. And District Five, Councillor Brent Sampson.
(Mumbling)
The roll has been called, Madam Chair.
Thanks, Troy. Okay, so we will begin, I guess, with items added to the agenda. And before we jump to that first item, I do want to acknowledge that this month has been, you know, we should acknowledge that this month has been Pride Month. I know that we've had the flag flying all the month of June, but wanted to kind of bring some attention to that as well. And just because it's an important kind of sign that Richmond County is an inclusive and welcoming place. Also want to recognize that last week, June 21st, we recognized National Indigenous Peoples' Day across many parts of Canada. So didn't want to go on with our meeting without mentioning those two important milestones. Okay, so items added to the agenda. We do have the NSFM Council invitation, which has been added previously as Item 14A. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening?
Yes, Madam Warden. Can I add a discussion on the grant funding for the portuware in this room, please?
Okay, so Item 14B would be grant funding, portuware, petit de gras. Any further items to add to the agenda? Okay. Hearing none, could I have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Digdon. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Any further discussion on the agenda? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Right, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda are the review of minutes, and we do have several sets to review this evening. The first are the regular council meeting minutes from May 27th, 2024. If there are no errors or omissions, could I have a motion to approve, please?
(Mumbling)
Thanks, Councillor Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll second.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the meetings of May 27th? The minutes of May 27th? All right, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. The next item are the budget planning meeting minutes from June 7th, 2024. If there's no errors or omissions, could I have a motion to approve, please?
I'll move that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or?
(Mumbling)
Thanks, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion on the budget planning meeting minutes? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Special meeting minutes from June 13th, 2024 are the next minutes to be approved. If there's no errors on those, could I have a motion, please?
I move their approval.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Digdon. Any further discussion on the special meeting minutes? Okay. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, the next item on our agenda then is the question period. So just a reminder to folks that the question period is restricted to items on the committee reports. The phone number that you can call to ask a question is 902-226-9885. Or if there is anyone from the gallery who would like to ask a question, they can come to the podium. We'll ask people to state their name and proceed with their questions. The committee reports too, I want to remind folks, are now all fully published in advance as part of our meeting package on the municipality's website, with the agenda and all the other relevant documents. So if folks have questions about those, they can find them there in advance as well as ask questions at this point. All right, I'm not hearing any questions, so I think we'll move right along. And we'll move on to committee reports and start with committee of the whole. So over to you, Deputy Warden.
(Mumbling) (Mumbling)
Thanks, Councillor Brent Sampson. As re-
So Committee of the Whole report for June 2024. The committee met on June 10th, 2024. The committee discussed the sale of property PID number 75079954 and PID 75026898 for the upcoming sales tax on August 23rd, 2024. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to accept the recommendation from staff to sell property PID 75079954 and PID 75026898 at the tax sale on August 23rd, 2024 as discussed in closed sessions.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please? Second. Thanks, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Naye vote from Councillor Digdon. That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Forward Together Plan presented by Tyler Mathis, CEO of K-Bretton Partnership. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to endorse the Liaison Oversight Committee, acceptance of the Forward Together Plan as the economic development strategy of the K-Bretton Regional Enterprise Network, and further move commit to aligning Richmond County's economic development efforts with Forward Together.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. A second or please?
I'll second the motion.
Thanks, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? Councillor? Yep?
I just wanted to add a bit to the conversation that we had at the Committee of the Whole, that since the Committee of the Whole meeting, we did receive in confidence the draft year-end report and their business plan. And so I think the folks, you know, thank Tyler for sending those along because they did certainly help to clarify a bit of the ask that they were looking for, so.
For sure. Yeah. Thanks. Thank you, Councillor Sampson. So I'm just noticing a little bit of a delay on when my microphone's lighting up. I'm hoping that people are picking up what we're hearing at home, but I'll try to keep an eye on it. So yeah, the motion is, the motion's on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Oh, we have a naye from Councillor Brent Sampson. That motion is carried. All right, back to you, Deputy Warden.
The committee discussed the shared road project. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to defer the discussion to the Bylaw and Policy Committee for the development of a bylaw that would permit the municipality of the County of Richmond to designate a municipal roadway or part of a roadway as a road trail.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Is there a second or on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the River Bourgeois Mariner Society for the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds in the amount of $1,500. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to defer requests from the River Bourgeois Mariner Society for the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funds in the amount of $1,500 to the next meeting following budget discussions.
Okay, that motion's been made. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Digdon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the request for the financial support for building permit fees from Jeremy Carroll Brella Homes. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to defer the request from Jeremy Carroll Brella Homes for financial support for building permitting fees to the next meeting following budget discussions.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the request from Anne Levitt, Board Chair of the Almedam Historical Society, to proclaim the week of September 23rd to 28th as Robert Bouchard and Cornelia Boucher Week. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to approve the request from Anne Levitt, Board Chair of the Almedam Historical Society, to proclaim the week of September 23rd to 28th as Robert Bouchard and Cornelia Boucher Week.
Okay, so there was a typo there, so it's the 22nd to the 28th. But the motion's been made with that amendment, so could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried.
The committee discussed the Canada Post Rural Mail Service Interruptions. I move that council accept the recommendation from the Committee of the Whole to have staff invite a representative from Canada Post to a future meeting of council for discussion on rural mail service interruptions.
Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. I think we might be having a few sound difficulties, but we're going to work on that. So apologies to the folks watching at home. We'll take a brief recess if we need to, but the motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Is this the same as the one we just approved?
This concludes the Committee of the Whole report for the month of June 2024, and I move its adoption.
Thank you, Councillor Sampson. Could I have a second or? No, not you, Councillor. Councillor Brent Sampson is attempting to second the motion, so the folks watching at home, he has seconded the motion, but his mic is just having some difficulties.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Oh, look, I think none of our, none of our mics are working right now. Okay, so Councillor Brent Sampson has seconded the motion. We are just having a few sound difficulties, folks. Is there any further discussion on the Committee of the Whole report? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thank you very much, Deputy Warden, for running through that with us. The next item on the agenda is the Bylaw and Policy Committee Report. And I may pass that back over to you, Deputy Warden, if that's okay, if you could run through that.
Yep, so the Bylaw Policy Committee Report for June 2024. The committee met on June 10th. The committee discussed the committee's policy. I move the council accept the Bylaw Policy Committee's recommendation to proceed with the adoption process for a committee's policy.
Okay, could I have a second or on that, please?
I'll second that.
Thanks, Councillor Digdon. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried.
The committee met on June 18th. The committee discussed the following policies: low income tax exemption program policy, purchasing and tendering policy, and flag policy. I move that council accept the Bylaw Policy Committee's recommendation to proceed with the adoption process for the low income tax exemption program policy, the purchasing and tendering policy as amended, and the flag policy as amended.
Thanks, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or on that motion?
You just read it.
Councillor Sampson's having some difficulties with this. Oh, really? Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Also, Digdon has seconded the motion. Is there any further discussion?
Yep. Further discussion? I'll speak loud.
Okay, here, I'm going to turn my mic on and point it in your direction.
I was wondering if these shouldn't be done as three separate items? I was thinking that might have made more sense to-
Sure.
Well, I think this is a motion to move them forward to approval-
To council-
And they're all separate.
Okay.
Yeah, fair enough.
Okay. Okay, so in case folks at home couldn't hear, Councillor Sampson was questioning adopting them all in one, but we do have them later on the agenda as separate items, so we'll cover them off separately there. And I, so any further discussion on that item? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Back to you, Deputy Warden.
This concludes the Bylaw Policy Committee Report for June 2024, and I move its adoption.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or on that?
Yes, I seconded.
Okay. Thanks, Councillor Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay, the motion's been seconded by Councillor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. And folks, before we move on to number eight on our agenda, the motion to adopt several policies, I'm going to ask for a brief recess. I just want to make sure that we've got sound. Yep, sorry.
Test, test.
It's not working. I just want to make sure that we're functioning, so.
Is that working, Glenn? Yep.
Testing?
So they break in the chain as well? I think we unplugged that one.
Okay.
Yep. We're good.
All right, so we don't need that recess after all. We're troubleshooting on the fly, right? It's great, okay. So the next item on the agenda is the motion to adopt. So we have several items here for adoption. The first is the committee's policy. So this committee's policy has been months and months in the making, maybe years in the making. And want to thank Shelley in particular for her hard work on this. But essentially, it establishes a framework for committee participation by councillors, members of the public on either committees established by council or committees where councillors', you know, presence are requested or expected, that type of thing. And it makes sure that the committee structure aligns with, you know, our legislative requirements and legal requirements and that type of thing. It also sets out, you know, I guess, a bit of a format for terms of reference. So if, I guess I'll open for discussion or I guess look for a motion to adopt the committee's policy at this stage, and we can kind of discuss it after it's been seconded.
I'll make the motion to adopt the committee's policy.
Thank you, Councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Okay, discussion on the motion. If folks have items they wanted to bring up related to committee's policy? I know we've discussed it at length, so it's an exciting piece of work and I think on the heels of the communications plan, you know, yeah. Major accomplishment, so. Any further discussion on the committee's policy? Okay, hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, the next item is the adoption of the low income tax exemption program policy. And so for folks who are not familiar with council's discussion on this policy, or I should say the Bylaw and Policies Committee discussion on this policy, it essentially outlines an opportunity for people who would qualify, you know, in low income situations for a tax exemption of, I believe, we established a threshold of $150. And so this is, I guess, in part to address the affordability challenge of living anywhere in Nova Scotia or Canada these days. So could I have a motion to adopt the low income tax exemption program policy?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Digdon. Is there any further discussion on the low income tax policy? Councillor Sampson.
There we go. No, I just want to thank staff, first of all, for all their work on this. I know it's going to be a work in progress and interested to see how it plays out and it's, you know, we'll see how it goes the first year and hopefully councils to come in the future can review this often enough to find out what's working and where it can be improved upon. I think we're starting sort of slow and we'll take it from here and hopefully it's going to be great to help a lot of people in the future.
Thank you, Councillor Brent Sampson. Sorry, my computer is dinging at me. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is the purchase and tendering policy. And so this was to basically bring our purchase and tendering policy more in alignment with the practice, which removed sort of a supplier list reference from it. That was, I think, the biggest part of the adjustment, but there were some additional, you know, small amendments as well. So could I have a motion to approve the purchasing and tendering policy?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Could I have a second or please?
I will second it.
Thank you, Councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on the purchasing and tendering policy? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the flag policy. So this was an amendment to the flag policy to allow for or to account for the addition of a flag pole that will be specific to the special kind of causes. Like I mentioned at the beginning of the meeting this evening, we are flying the pride flag. So the addition of the sixth pole will prevent us from having to remove the county flag and we'll be able to celebrate those, you know, and honor those special occasions as they arise. So could I have a motion to approve the flag policy?
I will make the motion.
Thank you, Councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second or please?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Councillor Mike Digdon. Any further discussion on this item?
Yeah, I like the policy for the most part, but I don't know that I can support it just in the sense of for the sixth flag pole kind of thing. I prefer the way it works now with doing the, you know, the special flags within that group of flags. And I'm not sure that I'd agree with incurring the extra cost, that's all.
Thank you, Councillor Brent Sampson, for your comments on that. Any further discussion? Councillor Digdon?
Yeah, I just, I guess I'd just like to point out that one of the reasons we put the extra flag pole was to eliminate the process of removing our County of Richmond flag, which, you know, as we're, we sit, I think that's one of the most important flags that we fly year-round. So for me, it was a no-brainer to put that extra flag pole up.
Yeah, certainly two schools of thought on that, for sure. Okay, thank you for your comments. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, so it's an, motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda is new business from Richmond Housing Corporation Bylaw Amendments. So these bylaw amendments were something that the Board of Directors of Richmond Housing Corporation had worked on. And again, special thanks to Shelley. I know you led a lot of that process and discussion in making sure that we're in alignment with provincial regulation on this. And so it did result in some adjustments to the bylaws, and they've been presented in the council package, which was published, I guess, last week. Are there, I guess we would need at this stage of the game, looking for a motion to approve the amendments to the Richmond Housing Corporation bylaws. And this is specifically so that we can forward those bylaws on to the provincial government, showing the Board of Directors' approval plus the council's approval, because that is required in order to make any changes to bylaws for municipal corporation.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councillor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second or?
I will second it.
Thank you, Councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion on the Richmond Housing Corporation Bylaw Amendments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay, so the next item on the agenda was an item that I had added last week when we were formulating the agenda and discussing with the CEO, CAO, related to kind of climate emergency planning, but I think maybe there should be a slash there because it is, of course, very much tied to coastal protection. And really, this was just a verbal update that I wanted to provide to councillors because I've had a community resident reach out to talk about how, you know, municipalities across Canada, as far back as 2019, began to declare a climate emergency in their various local regions. And it was, I guess, a group called Random Acts of Green. And so, you know, I guess the question is, is this a, is this a road we want to go down? And before I think going down, and I think, you know, we obviously as a municipality need to be doing some homework, our municipal climate plan was last updated in 2013. I know we've discussed that at this table before, you know, and how it needs to be kind of brought into, brought up to date. We probably need it to start to factor in emergency management planning. We currently have, for instance, things like our vulnerable persons registry on our emergency management planning, you know, list of things to do. So there's a real connection between sort of the climate emergency, our climate plans and adaptations, municipal infrastructure, our emergency planning. It all really ties in together, of course, with coastal protection as well. So this, you know, I guess the thought process is that it is supported by the provincial plan, which is the future of Nova Scotia's coastline. And we're still exploring our role in that through EDPC, I think, because I know our municipal planning strategies that we did for the unzoned areas refers specifically to the Coastal Protection Act. And so there's some work that needs to be done to bring us kind of more in alignment with what's actually rolled out. I'm not sure if council is aware, but there are municipalities who are taking some leadership on this. A great example would be Lunenburg. They've recently passed their own coastal protection regulations. I'm not sure that that's a road we want to go down, but I think there's some lessons to be learned from the example that they're setting there. The town of Mahone Bay has, in effect now, a greenhouse gas reduction action plan. That's, and I think a climate and energy sustainability director of some sort, that saw an entire role in their municipality that's dedicated to that work. So what's prompted all of this, you know, aside from the, you know, the request to consider the declaration of a climate emergency is that there are currently funding programs, and soon-to-be funding programs, that are going to become available. And I'd like for us to be well-positioned to be able to take advantage of them, so we could leverage some of our core funds into, you know, to get some additional investment. So one of them would be the Green Municipal Fund. They currently have a local Leadership for Climate Adaptation Funding Program available, and that's a program through the Federation of Canadian Municipalities. They have three funds, basically a Focus on Adaptation and Action, Climate Ready Plans and Processes, and a Financing Adaptation to help municipalities finance climate adaptation capital projects. That's, that one's coming up. So, it would, I think, be in our best interest to kind of be ready to take advantage of those. We also know that there's a provincial climate change community capacity program from our discussions with Megan McMorris, who's been really helpful. The province also has funding navigators in place. And of course, with Richmond County being the home of the two, you know, very large hydrogen developments being planned for Canada, this is really an opportunity also for us to leverage that work to improve energy security and affordability, while also planning for a net-zero future for our county. So, that's a lot of information, and I have a bunch of links available that I've shared with Troy and would be happy to share with other folks. But essentially, what I'm seeking at this stage from council would be a recommendation to ask staff to update, to update essentially, or to refer staff to look at updating our EDPC information, so that, you know, taking out the pieces from our municipal planning strategies that really speak to the, you know, both coastal protection, but also potentially related to emergency management planning. And then also to kind of refer to staff to work with the provincial funding navigator to see if we could suss out an opportunity that would be specific to these funding programs, to begin to really push the, you know, the boat forward on this. So, so that's what I'm just wanting to present to, this evening, to council for your consideration. And with, I would have preferred to have a kind of a more open discussion at committee of the whole on this, but timing's everything, and I didn't want to let it go till September, because there's funding deadlines coming up in the summer, so. So just would be open to your thoughts on this, and to see if you'd be willing to refer this to staff for further investigation. Counselor.
So these funding opportunities, I assume you've had a look through some of them. Like, are they 100% funding? I'm just wondering how that works, where we haven't, it's really the first time we've talked about it. So I'm always concerned to push something down the pipe if we have nothing in the budget to cover off a portion, or...
Yeah, exactly, and... That's a great question. So the ones that I was looking at, I think, today were 90%. So the levels are range, right? And so that's why I'm thinking, rather than asking staff to look at a specific program, could we ask staff to do some investigation on what would be appropriate, based on the budget that we have? Because we do have kind of a, we do have a section in our budget that is for municipal financing, municipal priorities. So if we could find a way to leverage that appropriately, would be great.
Yeah.
All right.
I'd be willing to make the motion to ask staff to, you know, do some of that investigation, both through EDPC and through the government programs, and whatever is appropriate, I think, in terms of, you know, moving this agenda forward and, you know, accessing whatever funding opportunities there are.
Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second on that? Thanks, folks. And I should, you know, in terms of further discussion, Troy and I have discussed this, and so we're kind of, you know, on the same page, that there could be an opportunity there, for sure, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Thanks, folks, and thanks for indulging that. Like I said, there's a bit of time sensitivity on it, and I didn't want it to go till September. All right, the next item on the agenda is action required. We have a memo from Kathleen Jeffrey, our Director of Finance. It's regarding the Lewisdale Lions Club grant request for the Type IV General Waterfront Development Funding for $20,000. So at this point, we would be looking for, potentially, based on, you know, past discussions and, you know, the presentation from Mr. Sampson, which was, I think, appreciated by everyone, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the waterfront development funding for the Lewisdale Lions Club to be allocated from the CCBF waterfront development funds, subject to assessment by staff as to the project's availability. So would someone be interested in making that motion at this time?
I would love to make that motion. For, I would like to make the motion to approve the $20,000 from the waterfront funds.
Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion on this item? Counselor Sampson?
Yeah, I just wanted to invite the, you know, if members of the public are watching this meeting but didn't watch the meeting where Tommy did the presentation on what they're proposing, I would encourage you to go back and have a look. It was, it's an amazing project, and it's great to be a part of, to be any part of it. It's going to be, it's going to be something great.
Well said. Okay, any further discussion? Counselor Digdon.
Yeah, Madam Warden, I'm just looking over the ask, and it looked to me like the ask was $20,000. And I'm just wondering, in the past, usually, usually when it comes to CCBF and any other funding, we usually do half the ask. Correct.
In that, in that case, it was... Yeah, in that case, it was half the cost of the project. This is a small percentage on, this is $20,000 on a $1.4 million project.
What you meant, Counselor Digdon? Yeah. Go ahead.
It's great that I addressed everybody at the same time. Thanks for all chiming in. I didn't mean to push any sour buttons. I just, I guess regardless of the cost of the project, I, as a rule of thumb, usually the ask was half of what we usually have been funding in the past. Maybe, maybe I'm mistaken on that, but... Maybe that's just the way it rolled out.
Yeah, sorry. So, yeah, like, for clarification, what we have, what we have as a practice expected of community groups, as Counselor Brent Sampson said, is that we would, the municipal contribution should be no more than 50%. And we're doing that as a matter of practice, so that we can, we can, you know, stretch the funds over as many groups as possible, but it's 50% of the project cost, not 50% of the ask. What we're expecting is to see asks that are no more than 50%. And like I said, that's been a practice, not less so a policy, but certainly what we've been doing, yeah. Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. The next item on the agenda is memo again from Kathleen Jeffrey, Director of Finance, regarding requests for the Type III Canada Day Grant Funds for the Johnstown Harbour Wharf for $500, and the South Mountain Arm of Gold Community Association for $400. So could I have a motion to approve those amounts?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second? I'll second. Thank you, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? That motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is a letter from Colin McDougall, one-of-a-kind design regarding pole banner kits. And having chatted with Troy about this, you know, we're feeling like we need to refer this item to staff, because I think the kit that's been presented won't perhaps necessarily fit some of the poles that are being targeted for them. And also, of course, there are, you know, there are poles, I think, in the village and in Budledek that would not be something that we would be, you know, funding, because they're not Richmond County municipal infrastructure. It would be village or band council infrastructure. So, I think we would probably be best off referring this back to staff, if councilors agree. If so, could I have a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion to refer it back to staff for more information.
Great, thank you. Could I have a second, please?
I'll second it.
Thanks, Councilor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is an interesting one. So we have a letter from Terry Doyle, CAO with the Town of Port Hawkesbury, regarding use of the Joint and Industrial Park, and specifically its 38 Unity Drive for a straight-area tractor-pull event. So, I believe the town has, is onside with this, and certainly have had some discussions with the NSCC as well on this. So I'd be looking for a motion to approve the use of the park for this event.
I would gladly make that motion.
It's a fun one. All right, thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Could I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Mike Digdon. All right, any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right, that motion is carried. Okay, thanks, folks. And I guess Troy will leave that in your hands to follow up with Terry. And so hopefully we'll see a really great event happening in the region sometime soon. All right, the next item on the agenda is correspondence for information purposes, and the first being from Warden Penny Smith from the municipality of Shelburne. It's a letter to the Honorable Sean Fraser, Housing Infrastructure and Communities. And she's, you know, provided that in the package to give municipalities a sense of, you know, what their ask is of Minister Fraser. And any questions on that item? Okay, the next item is a message from the Honorable John Lor, Minister of Municipal Affairs and Housing, regarding the NSFM 12 months notice. And there were several items that Minister Lor had outlined that would potentially be impacting municipalities within the next 12 months. Any questions on the items listed there? Okay, my computer is having a hard time. All right, so if there's none, then... We're just having lots of technical difficulties here this evening. There are gremlins everywhere, so. All right, so if there's no questions on those items, we'll move on to unfinished business. So, these were grant requests, I think that had been, I guess, discussed or appeared on a previous agenda, but without our budget approved at the time, we felt the need to refer them to a later time. So here they are coming back. The first is a request from the River Bourgeois Community Services Society for a grant request for the Type III Recreation Sponsorship Grant in the amount of $500. So, just as, I guess I would say, just as being this is in my district, I'd be, you know, happy to support that from my district funds, but would need someone on council to make a motion as such.
I'm happy to spend your money and make a motion that we approve it out of the District Four funds.
Melanie Sampson, could I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion on the River Bourgeois Community Services Grant Request? Counselor?
Yeah, my only question is just where the budget wasn't included, but I know this is a smaller ask, and it's coming out of the district fund, so I don't know if, you know, the issue for anybody or anything we want to discuss, whether or not would staff be able to work with them to get a fairly simple budget, or just so everybody's on the same page, right?
So, Counselor, there is a budget on... Pages, I don't know, the page numbers are a lot.
Yeah, I believe it's an event budget. Yeah, it's not the annual, but I mean, if we're good with an event budget, I'm fine with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are councilors okay with an event budget being proposed for this? And I'm assuming that staff would have had this conversation, because it wouldn't get here unless... Yeah, okay. All right, thank you, Counselor. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay, that motion is carried. All right, the next item on the agenda is the Richmond River Roots Market Garden Society Grant Request for Type IV Regional Health General Grant Fund in the amount of $9,200. And I know we want, there are some discussions, some updates I'd like to have with folks after having a chat with the CEO, CAO about this. But I guess to move it to discussion, I'd look for a motion to approve... Yeah, I would be looking for a motion to approve the grant request for the Type IV Regional Health General Grant Funding in the amount of $9,200.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, Counselor. Could I have a second? Thank you, Deputy Warden. Okay, so discussion on the budget. I did want to let folks know that, I know staff reached out to the applicant, Dorothy Bernard, today, I think as recently as today, just to clarify a few items. And even for my purposes, when I was reading through it, I was misunderstanding some of the terminology, I think, around, you know, I mentioned that to a few folks earlier, but, so there's basically, it's a four-item budget, five-item budget, I guess. There's staff time that they would be putting towards this. They would be paying per workshop for workshop leaders. They're looking at $200 in posters and ads, and they're looking at paying for a coordinator to coordinate the activities of the volunteers who will be supporting these workshops related to food security and all of that good stuff. The fifth item on the budget is an administrative fee. And the way it was broken out is really, like, it was creating some problems for me. I know generally when we see a request coming from, and I guess just in his additional information, that this River Roots Market Garden Society request, the financials for River Roots goes all through the Dr. Kingston Memorial Health Clinic. So they administer the project on behalf of River Roots, because they have the capacity to do so. And so they charge an administration fee, which is usually 10%. So the math was a little off on the admin, and just the way it was broken out looked very separate. So, the four items that I mentioned, the staff time, the workshop leaders, the marketing, et cetera, and the coordinator for volunteers, is, comes to about $8,000. So 10% of that would be 800. And I know that that's an administrative account, like, number I would be more comfortable with, but I think at the end of the day, what it was kind of coming out to with for the $9,200 was closer to 13%. So, so I just wanted to clarify that. We did kind of reach out to them. And that's, of course, to ensure that the administration at the Kingston Centre, you know, is at least getting some compensation for the time and efforts that they're making to run all the financial piece and the administrative piece for the project. So, any, is there questions about that? You know, I guess, I guess what I'm saying too is I would be open to a friendly amendment to adjust the amount from $9,200 to $8,800 to account for the 10% admin fee. I'm not sure we would want to go much higher than that, but, anyway. But any other discussion on this item?
Okay, so can you just help me? So I understood the portion that talked about the volunteer, the coordinator of volunteers. Also, also, also don't like the word volunteer coordinator. The coordinator of volunteers. So I understood that, and then the admin piece of 450 for that, right? But where's the rest?
There's another page.
Well, that other page has a lot of things on it.
Yes, it does.
There's something wrong with me. I don't see it. I'm sorry, I just... Okay, yes, sorry, you're right. I read the top part, but didn't see that part, okay. Yeah, one was about workshops, and then, yes, okay.
To, you know, if we were to approve at either the $9,200 or the $8,800, which is, I think, what I would be suggesting, is we would have to figure out how we're going to finance that. I certainly wouldn't be able to do that all from my district fund, but wouldn't mind supporting the project in some way. I think the work that they do is extremely good, but I, you know... Deputy Ward?
Yeah, so I agree, Madam Warden. I think the work that they do is very important, and it's a great, great initiative and great society. So I would be willing to fund the $500 out of my district.
Thank you, Deputy Warden. Counselor Sampson?
So we also have our general funds as well that we could utilize for this, because it is open to, you know, people from everywhere. it is open to, you know, people from everywhere, and I know different people who go to this from all different districts. I certainly would want it to be moved down to 8,800. I'm still not sure I'm all the way there on 8,800 either. I'm open to conversation, but from others. So for me, I think we should take some from the general funds. I would put, you know, I'd put 500 for my district as well, but I'd like to think a little more about the total dollar value in terms of what we think is right.
Yeah. And I guess, you know, to be fair, as much as I'm a huge supporter of Richmond River Roots, it does appear that they're seeking 100% to cover the costs of this work, right? And it's a project like any other. As we discussed earlier, Counselor Diggden, you know, we've typically been supporting at a 50% level. So, you know, I'm open to other discussions, or if we want to, you know, send this back. I don't know if there's a time constraint here. Did Dorothy mention that when you were speaking with her?
I think it would be, too, because this all seems like summer activity.
Yeah. Yeah. You know, so, I mean, if we're not prepared to pass a motion this evening, though, we certainly could, you know, bring it back, because I'm sure we'll be having a special meeting over the summer. Counselor Diggden? You're trying.
There we go. Thank you for letting me speak. So, yeah, Madam Ward, I guess like Counselor Melanie, I, and in the past, we usually only do support 50%, but I think I would look at it at probably, if we took the 8,800 or the 92, it really makes no difference, and we went half from our, from our fund, and then we took, I'd be willing to use 500 from my own district fund as well. So I don't know that we're going to get to the 88, but if I think we have enough counselors contribute around the fund, then I would be open to adding the two of those together, taking 44 from our general fund, and then whatever we get from our district funds. But I would like to see our general fund only support half of, as we do.
Okay. So the suggestion is that we would make a friendly amendment to that motion to support at the 8,800 level, 4,400, 50% of which would come from the general fund, and then amounts from districts, from several districts who were interested in supporting it. Is that what you're suggesting at this point?
Yeah. So I believe so far we have districts one, two, and three that are supporting a 500 each.
Right. And I would put the same, so...
And four. And we're just waiting on District Five.
Yeah.
Might not be working, so maybe...
Okay. So Counselor Brent Sampson, you know, before I kind of start to formulate this motion, then for counselors, is there a contribution that you would be interested in?
Yeah. No, it's early in the year, and I'm wondering as well, too, if, it's kind of like two separate asks here, and what if we funded the first one, the 5750, maybe? Because it is a lot to one organization when we're not getting, when they're not seeing funding from anyone else on this, right? I don't know if there's any thoughts on that.
I don't see the breakdown of two separate asks. I see the breakdown, but I don't see where they just...
Well, I think, and that was the part that I was missing. So there's one part, which is 3,450, which is the coordinator of volunteers. Okay. And then there's another part, that was the part I was missing at first, about doing workshops, talking about doing 12 workshops, and then the total of that is 5,750. So really, it's two separate things, two separate pieces of work. So because without the funding, are they going to be able to make either of those fly? Like, if you only give half, can they make it fly? Because they're fully funded, and right now, they're in a big, they have a pretty big deficit there. So if you thought about their ask, and if you thought, if you wanted to do, like, half 4,600, well, we could do, either do the 3,450, or we could do the 5,750, bring ourselves to that number, and then at least they could do the workshops.
I think the workshops especially probably aligns a little bit more with food security, like, stuff we've been talking about, you know, with the strategic priorities.
Okay. Go ahead.
Yeah. So, again, I seen the breakdown, but what I'm saying is that the ask is on one submission, it's not on two. Therefore, we're breaking it down for them. So really and truly, I don't feel that's fair either, what we're sending them back. If we go half of the 5,000, we're sending them back with less than what we were originally going to send them back with. So, again, I stand on the, I stand on supporting half of the 8,800 at the tune of 44, plus 500 out of my fund, and whoever else is willing to support at that amount. Then that amount, I guess, if the five counselors go, it's a total of 6,900. If the four counselors go, then it's a total of 6,400. And then if they require the extra funding to move forward, then they can bring back at another. So I'd be willing to make that motion.
And I'm sorry, I've lost track. I believe it was you, Counselor Brent Sampson, who made it? Okay. So the motion on the floor currently was to fund the 9,200, and so we'd be looking for a friendly amendment in that regard. So...
Deputies, your second.
And the deputies, the second.
Yeah.
So we'd need agreement from both to fund 4,400 from the general, 500 from districts one, two, three, four, and then you could decide, Counselor Sampson, you know, the fifth one.
Oh, I see. I misunderstood.
Right. Right. Yeah.
Yeah. I'd be willing to go along with that. I'll just put 250 from the district fund, just because it's the beginning of the year, so. I much prefer these larger projects that deal with the whole county to come out of the general funding.
And Madam Ward, if the, I guess, if the thing around the table, I guess, is to support from the general fund more than from the district fund, then I'm okay with that. I just, as a rule of thumb, we usually tend to go at 50%. So, again, I do understand that they are, you know, non-for-profit, and they are in a deficit, so I guess that's the dealing of counsel, too. I'm good on either way. I just wanted to point out the fact that we...
Okay. So based on Counselor Brent Sampson's comments about 250 from his district fund, though, what we would have is a friendly amendment that would be agreed upon of a total investment of $6,650, separated out as 4,400 from general, then 500 from districts one through four, and 250 from District Five. Counselors okay with that? I see a nodding from Counselor Brent Sampson. Deputy Warden? Okay. All right. Is there any further discussion, then? We'll consider that friendly amendment made. And, okay. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? That motion is carried. Okay. Thanks, folks. All right. The next item on the agenda is Lennox Place Limited regarding a request for financial support for permitting fees. So I think, after having discussed this with the CAO, we probably need to, or we could look at approving this at this point in principle, pending the approval of our capital improvement policy that we have focused on housing. So I'd be looking...
It's in the budget now.
It's in the budget now. So we just need to, we just need to make sure that that policy's in place. And, you know, so would counselors be okay with making a motion to approve that pending the adoption of the policy?
Yeah. I'll make that motion.
Could I have a second here?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Diggden. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Sampson?
So I just want to clarify, are we, when we approve our capital improvement policy, which should be hopefully over the summer, that's the plan, we thought we'd have it today, but we're going to have it soon, will we need to then revisit this to have a final approval? Or will this motion just come into effect once that, like, will the approval of the policy trigger this approval?
Yeah. I think that's what the intent is.
That's fine.
Just checking. Yeah. So that's the intent. Okay. Any further discussion? Yep. Sorry, CA.
For the camera. And again, that's what the delay is. The mics are now making the cameras track, so that's, whichever camera's picking you up has to track to you. So that's where the delay is. So where this policy is going to be reimbursement of the fees, where it's not so much waiving of the fees, there are going to be a while before they get those bills and be able to supply us with receipts anyway. But I think it'll give them comfort knowing that you've allowed for it in your budget, and we just have to tidy up the policy and the application process so that we make sure we're ready to go with everybody, and then we'll, and by all means, I'll be reaching all the housing developers and letting them know where we are.
Yes. And, I mean, then it would just give them the ability to, on any applications that they have to submit, they would be, because that's the big piece that I just don't want to hold up, because I know at least there's a couple that are on today's agenda and probably others in the hopper that really need those approvals, you know, as part of their loan applications or funding applications. So I just wanted to make sure that this motion would be sufficient for them to use that in their applications. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Counselor Melanie Sampson. Is there any further discussion? Okay. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? All right. That motion is carried. So, folks, I'm seeing, I think we need some clarification on this next one. So it is a duplicate.
I think it is, Madam Chair. And I think with our switch over in the grants, one of them got on here in March and deferred.
Yeah.
So I believe this is both for the, it's the draw, luck of the draw event. So the one that was approved and committed to the hole in this one are the same one, I think.
So this is a duplicate that's, yeah. So we probably should have...
Did we not defer it through the committee report? I think we deferred it to...
Was it a defer?
Until after budget, yeah.
There you go. So that's why it's there.
Okay. So because the data was the same, and I just didn't want to, okay. All right. Perfect. Great.
So it's meant to be the same.
It's meant to be the same. Okay. Thank you. All right. Perfect. I knew there was some confusion on that one. So, all right. So this is essentially for the luck of the draw. It's an replication for 1,500 in assistance. I think we've supported that in the past. But essentially, we'd be looking for a motion to approve the grant request from the River Bourgeois Mariner Society in the amount of $1,500. And I would be, I'd be okay with allocating half of that from my district fund. And I guess the reason I'm saying that is because I'm anticipating additional requests coming in this year and the district fund to be depleted. So that's what I'm anticipating. It's going to be a busy year ahead. But, so I'm just not sure that I can support from my fund alone at the 1,500 level. So if counselors wanted to make a motion for the 750 or for the full amount, I'm happy to entertain it, just so we can move it to discussion.
Yeah. Madam Ward, if you're willing to take the 750 from your district fund, I would put a motion forward that we take the 750 from the district fund, the regional fund, to meet the 1,500.
To award $1,500 to be allocated, 750 from the District Four Fund and 750 from the Regional. Is there a second here on that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Thank you, Counselor Diggden. Any further discussion? Counselor Sampson?
I do have a bit of a concern, because as you commented, we have supported this function, I think, every year since we've been elected. And I would not support us taking, you can do whatever you like with your district funds, I wouldn't support us taking it from the regional funds, only because I feel like when we, in the beginning, we were supporting it to help it get back off the ground in terms of, like, to rebound from COVID. And I just would not like to set a precedence that as groups are hosting fundraising events, that we would supplement that event. So for that, like I said, for that reason, I would not support it. If a second motion was made to just take the 750 from your district, I'll support that, but I wouldn't support anything from the regional fund.
Counselor Brent?
I think I'd be of the same mind, but just for a slightly different reason, only because I was thinking, it really fits more along the Type III, I believe. Like, this is kind of, it's a large ask for just contributing to the, you know, to the fundraising event. I mean, it's a good event, don't get me wrong, but I'm just thinking of some of these other situations, like the other one we just looked at for 500, and, you know, when we provide sponsorship, generally, it's not over $1,000. So I'd be more comfortable in the range of $1,000 than 1,500 total. But, again, your district funds, I don't feel it's appropriate for me to determine how you want to, you know what I mean? How you want to go with them.
Thanks, Counselor Brent Sampson. Any further discussion? Okay. Counselor Diggden?
Yeah. I think the only thing I would throw in is that, you know, there are several organizations that in the last four years, we do fund every year, and, you know, again, our hopes is that they build up so that they can, they can run on their own. But, you know, sometimes we do put money in from the county and from our own funds to support events that are really, you know, building, I guess, kind of a building block in the community. And honestly, this is a great event, and, again, I stick to the motion that we had on the table.
Thanks, Counselor Diggden. Deputy Ward, did you have any comments?
I have to go to my moment now.
Okay. Counselor Brent Sampson?
Yeah. My only other comment on that, just in case, if you're aware, Counselor Diggden, like, this would be the same group we've, you know, we helped out recently to the tune of 10,000, and that's part of the reason I'm thinking of that, too. Like, I want to support them, don't get me wrong, but it's just, we got to be able to be equitable throughout the county.
Yeah. They're working on a major, you know, capital project, so that we approve funds through the CCBF Waterfront Development Fund for, yeah, for that. So Counselor Diggden?
Yeah. And I think, again, the, just we want to make it clear to the public that the CCBF Fund is separate of our own in-house funding, so therefore, like the 20,000 we just approved for the Lewesdale Project, it's a completely separate fund that doesn't really come out of our tax-paying dollars.
Doesn't come... Yeah. To be clear. Yeah. Okay. So at this point, the motion is for 1,500 to be allocated, 750 from the district fund and 750 from the regional fund. You know, I kind of am understanding exactly what you're saying, Counselors Sampson. So, you know, I'd be willing to put, like, if you were interested in a friendly amendment, I'd be willing to put my contribution up to 1,000 from the District Four Fund, because I don't think that it's necessarily, you know, appropriate to have, you know, the remainder, like, the whole full half coming out of the regional fund either. So if you're okay with that type of an amendment, it'd be 1,500, you know, just to kind of ease the burden on the regional fund. Is that okay with you?
Yep.
Yeah. Okay. So any further discussion on that item? All right. So we're looking for approval of the motion, 1,500 allocated, 1,000 from District Four and 500 from the regional. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye? Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. That motion is carried. All right. The next item on the agenda is a message from Jeremy Carroll from Brila Homes, and this is, again, request for financial support for permitting fees. So, again, very similar to the last one with Lennox Place Limited, be looking for a motion this evening to approve pending the approval of the capital improvement policy, which covers the permitting fees as well. regional. So all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Okay. Thank you. That motion is carried. All right. The next item on the agenda is a message from Jeremy Carroll from Brila Homes, and this is again, request for financial support for permitting fees. So again, very similar to the last one with Lennox Place Limited, be looking for a motion this evening to approve pending the approval of the, the capital improvement policy, which covers the permitting fees as well.
So similar to the Lennox Place Limited, I would like to make a motion where we approve this request pending our capital improvement policy approval.
Thank you councillor Melanie Sampson. Could I have a secondary? Thank you, deputy Warden. Any further discussion on that item? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. That motion is carried. So the next item on the agenda is the multi-party First Nations and municipal agreement. So I'm not seeing the motion wording here, but essentially, kind of building on what councillor Melanie Sampson mentioned earlier, we received some supplementary information from the Cape Breton Partnership. I know we've approved kind of the alignment of, you know, the Forward Together Plan in principle, but this was specific to a request to support a five-year agreement, I believe it was, with 36-month out clause. Am I getting that correct? Okay. So, and councillor Part of it was. And then we defer, we were deferring it, right? Okay, I've missed that then. Yeah. One was the plan in general, and then one was the agreement to sign on to a multi-year deal, right? We separated it in two pieces at committee of the whole because we weren't really prepared. We didn't have a copy of a draft contract or, or the full, you know, information, right? So, and I'm getting those timelines right, I believe the five years with the 36-month out clause. So, and again, we just received that recently. So I guess what I'm asking at this point in the game, you know, if councillors are not, are still not comfortable in committing to that five-year deal with the 36-month out clause, that we could defer this again and ask Tyler Mathis to come in and have a conversation with us about, you know, some of the, some more of the rationale around why this is important and what this will mean. Yeah. Because it did include not just the five-year commitment and the 36-month notice required to exit, but it was also a 5% increase in 2024, 2025 for Richmond County with an annual cost of living increase as well, right?
Which we already budgeted for.
Which we've budgeted for, for this year, but I think we want to have some, you know, sober thought on that for sure. Councillor Sampson?
Yeah, I believe they said a 5% increase, but it was a 5,000 increase where our contribution is 70. So it's more than a 5% increase. But I just can't see anything with a 36-month out clause. Like, it's, in my opinion, it's not at all fair to the taxpayer, because, you know, two years into this agreement, we don't feel it's going well. We're already committed to five years. And, I mean, I understand from their vantage point why they'd want it. I don't blame them for a second. But I, I just don't feel it's, it's fair to the taxpayer, because we're locking in for far too long.
Certainly a valid concern. And I mean, I know there's many times, you know, we as a council make decisions that extend well beyond the term of, you know, our four-year elected cycle, and that's just the nature of being elected to these seats. But at the end of the day, if there are some concerns, we, we could ask Tyler to come in and have a bigger conversation and see if there's some maybe room for adjustment on those terms. Yeah, okay. I'm seeing some nodding heads around the table. So consensus from council on that? Okay. Great. We'll do that. So thanks for your discussion on that, folks. And we'll ask, we'll leave that in your hands, Troy, to, yeah, to connect with him. Okay. Thanks, folks. The next item on the agenda, and I'm realizing it's a quarter after eight, and there may be a hockey game on later today. So I know that's creating some time pressure for people. So we're going to move right along. The next item on the agenda is the review of action items. And this is for information only. So if folks have any questions on the action items. Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. And the next item is items added to the agenda, which was the NSFM council invitation. And so this is a memo from Nova Scotia Federation of Municipalities. They are requesting a touch base meeting to discuss how NSFM is serving municipalities and to hear how they can best serve Richmond County. So definitely appreciate the outreach. They, they've presented a bit of a challenging timeline, I think, you know, for some. They're looking at 10:00 AM to 11:30 AM on Thursday, July 11. And so first of all, I would like to find out from councillor, like, do you think you would have an appetite to speak with them? And if so, then, you know, does that timing make sense? Should we be looking for another timing? So. Or we could just at this point make a motion to kind of refer to staff to coordinate that and collect interest from councillors. Is that okay? Okay. So if I could ask for a motion to refer this back to staff?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you councillor Brent Sampson. Any, a secondary, please. Second. Thanks councillor Melanie Sampson. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed? All right. That motion is carried. Next item on the agenda is grant funding for the portuera piti de grana. So over to you, deputy Warden. This was your addition to the agenda.
Yep. Thanks very much, Madam Warden. So back on May 27, we made a motion and approved the motion to fund the portuera's request of 20,000. So down to half, so 10 out of the 20. And after speaking with Norman Fugere, he, he felt that he had put the, the funding request in earlier in the year, and then there were some issues and delays in getting it done, and also some confusion, where it was stated that the funding wouldn't apply to the CCBF for a repair. So it was more or less a replacement situation. So Norman was advised to take back his, his application, revamp that application, and ask the contractor in question for a code to replace the infrastructure. Then come to find that the CCBF would have been good for a revamp. So that would have put him back to the $15,000 initial cost for the project. So now, you know, he's up to 20,000 plus HST, which is 23,000, and we funded half of that. So he's like, hoping that, you know, he could get 15 out of the 20. That would, you know, kind of help with the extra 5,000 that it's costing, costing him to replace it and not revamp it, right? So, and I know that we're talking about percentages and, and, you know, funding 50% and all that stuff. But tonight, we funded 6,650 out of 7,200, not out of 9,200, so that's 72%. And last, and last year, we funded 15,000 out of 21,000 for his water and sewer situation. So that was 71% of the house, right? So I was hoping, and Norman is hoping that we could add the extra 5,000 to that funding request and make it 15 out of the 20.
Correct me if I'm wrong here, but I think, I believe if, if you would vote in favor of the motion, you can bring this back at the following meeting. But I think if you vote against it, you can't bring the same thing back up again. Am I not correct in that?
I think he did vote in favor.
No, he didn't.
No, he did not. So I believe any of the rest of us could, at the following meeting, bring that up. But I don't believe if you've lost on a motion that you can bring it up again at the next meeting. I could be incorrect, but
Yeah. So I, I voted against the $10,000 request. So I'm requesting a $15,000 request.
So had the, like, so from what I'm understanding, what you're saying is that originally, his intention was to do a $15,000 project. He was incorrectly told that the 15,000 wouldn't, wouldn't work. So then he, there was more work to be done to get it to, to get the same result, but do it differently, brought it to the 20. I mean, I guess my argument to that would be then if he would have come to us with the 1,500, we would have opted to probably fund 7,500. So he's already getting half of the project. I still stand by our decision to, to fund this 50%, as we do for most things, to your point. I wasn't on the motion that approved the water and sewer. I had, I had left the discussion because I had prepared the financials for that. But, and yes, I know tonight we did as well. It was very specific, you know, sort of like a, if you don't fund it, it doesn't happen at all. So I do know that we make exceptions, but in this case, I feel like this is an organization that's gotten a fair bit of funding from this council, and I think that funding it to 50% is sufficient. So as a person who voted yes to the motion, I would not be prepared to bring that up again.
I believe it should be a dead issue, though, at this point, simply, because it's not, it wasn't brought up to the agenda by somebody who voted in favor.
So, you know, we're, we're not really, I guess, because, I didn't realize it was a motion that, that adjustment that you were going to be making. So when we added this. But I think, you know, it doesn't preclude, you know, some discussions happening with staff to see about, you know, what are some next steps that could be taken. And I think that you've said, Troy, that you're open to that anyways and have had conversations with Norman. So if we could, if we could maybe just push it in that direction and just, you know, maybe for future things or whatever. But I think at this stage, just because of the procedures we're, procedural constraints we're facing here right now, I think we'll have to, we'll have to probably call it on that one and look at maybe some alternative next steps. Okay? Okay. Okay. All right. Thanks, folks. So next item on the agenda is question period. So we'll open it for questions, and this is restricted to the remainder of the agenda following the committee reports. And the phone number is 902-226-9885. It's 902-226-9885. And I see Mr. Richie Cotton's here from the gallery with a question.
Oh, there we go. Yeah, the only thing is somebody turned, okay, it's working, okay. I guess from my information, maybe I'm not following it close enough. I understand the Cape Breton Partnership, the Forward Together Plan. What exactly is that?
So it's essentially
I don't need
Yeah. It's just essentially a roadmap for economic development for Cape Breton Island, specifically the five municipalities and the five, or, yeah, the bands in Unimaki who, who are supporting the Cape Breton Partnership. So it doesn't really include the CBRM, right? Like, that wouldn't include them because they have a separate REN. So it's basically for rural Cape Breton. Yeah. You'll just need to press your button there again.
If there's no other phone calls coming in. The only thing, the committee of the whole report, red, I guess in the package, it put the Canada Post Rural Mail Service interruptions. But that wasn't dealt with, I don't think, in the committee of the whole report. It was in there, but it wasn't, it wasn't recommended to council. He said it off, he stopped at Robert Bouchard in Carnegie-Busha. But I mean, just
No, I know he did that one, because that was when Brent's microphone wasn't working, because I knew he'd want
So he did it in order.
Your mic timed, don't Oh, you hit yours. Oh, okay. All right. Did you have another question?
No, not a question, but I, I guess just, just a point on a motion to reconsider. And that was correct, by the way, Brent. But motion reconsider has to be done at this meeting. You only have one. Under Robert's rules, you'll, you'll see it on that. So I mean, you can easily get around that by, by getting a new motion in place. Yeah. Okay.
Thank you so much, Richie. Appreciate your questions. All right. Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We will consider the meeting adjourned, as there's no other business. So thanks, folks. Now, good luck tonight to the Edmonton Oilers. I'm going to use this seat to say that. All right, meeting adjourned. Thanks, folks.